All right, we're back in our meeting. We had a motion made to enter the meeting. We took a break to reset the recording. I'm going to start with the approvals. And I'm going to join the first nine. Mr. Polanski, it is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approved the minutes from the meeting of the Huntington Union Free School Board of Education dated June 3rd, June 5th, June 6th, June 8th, June 12th, June 14th, June 15th, June 20th. Wow, we really met a lot.
We need to meet more.
June 21 and July 7th. All right, I got them all.
You guys even like each other?
Can I have a motion, please? Teresa and Michelle, all in favor. Motion passes. All right, we have an FYI here. This FYI is regarding budget appropriation reports for general school lunch and special aid funds as of 6:30 2023. We have another FYI with budget transfers. And they're all listed there, quite a lot, end of year. Another FYI claims audit report issued by now Rocky Smith, LOP. And if you took a look at the report, everything looks great as usual. FYI, revenue status report as of 6:30 2023. And again, that's attached there as well. There's a treasures report. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approved the May 2023 treasures report. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Christine, second by Michelle, all in favor? Motion passes. Warrant certified, is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approved the attached warrants which were certified for payment on June 7, 2023, June 21st, 2023, and July 5th, 2023. Can I have a motion, please? Teresa, second by Christine, all in favor?
The big one.
Motion passes.
It always is. It's been half the budget.
I was waiting for you to say that, too.
Half the budget in one hand raise, there you go.
It's like a genie, no bottle, gone. All right, so this is the moment where we have our board members communicate with the community.
You want me to explain now or?
You can explain now.
Okay. I was just going to say, you know, all along during our superintendent search, I've been updating the community, so I just wanted to continue doing that before we, you know, have our vote just in general of what we've, of what we did. You saw all of those meetings that we had, and the reason why we had so many special meetings was because we had to do two rounds of interviews. Then we met several times to discuss the candidates. We met in those meetings further to discuss negotiations. And it was a difficult process. It was an interesting process. We learned a lot about the system. We learned a lot about each other. And so I think that, you know, we landed in a great spot, and more on that later. But just in general, I just wanted to tell the community that, you know, besides the fact that in the end we will end up with proposing, you know, a superintendent candidate tonight, we also did grow and change as a board because of the process. And, you know, while we can't share everything that happens behind the scenes with the community, we hope that you all felt included because we really tried through the process. I also wanted to thank, sorry, the name just went out of my head, but district-wise, thank you. Sorry, I'm really tired. District-wise, our search firm for all of their help and support through the process. Like I said, only one of us had even done anything similar before, so we needed guidance. We thank Mr. Polanski for his guidance whenever we needed it. He certainly was, is always there to, you know, while not interfering in the process at all, he has a good way of not interfering, but just guiding us with, you know, what would be appropriate and how to move forward and to resolve any conflicts that we had. So I just want to thank all of my trustees for going through the process together and coming out whole on the other side. And that's really what I wanted to say.
Thank you, Christine. Thanks to you, Christine, because I know that you did a lot, even to the last minute today. I know we would have liked to have had a little bit of notice, but by no fault of the candidate, we were able to secure the contract today, and that's the reason why we presented it now. But thank you, Christine, for everything you did in leading us through this. Thank board members and their families for giving your time, because it was hours, right? Many, many hours. It was not an easy process, but you guys were very thorough. And I know that it was a process that we're all going to be very happy with the results. Any other comments? Graduation? I missed it, but I did see a couple of pictures and videos that looked like a lot of fun. From what I heard, the community was very, very pleased with the results. It's always a great time of year, the graduation, usually my favorite time of year, but I wasn't able to be there. Michelle?
Have we had a meeting since the concerts? No.
No.
No. So I attended a few of the concerts, so thank to Mr. Solotto and the music staff. The concerts were excellent. I always enjoy going and watching the kids perform. They're just, they did a fabulous job, so thank you. And graduation is one of my favorite events to attend. And the staff did a terrific job of moving things around and planning for whether we can have it outside or inside, and I thought inside was fabulous. It was fantastic.
I liked it, too.
Yeah, I thought it was great.
I'm not saying we should move it. I'm just saying that I liked it.
Well, as a parent, I was thinking of it as a parent last year. I mean, I was on the stage, but you're closer to your kids if you're sitting in the auditorium than you are sitting on the field. Just, don't hit me.
I'd like to piggyback on that idea that much closer, on top of it having just the certitude of the weather, but the air conditioning, again, what we've done here, we were just commenting on this auditorium here, I'm like, wait a minute, I remember sweating here last year. To be able to have this and do it in a fiscally responsible way, I'm really grateful for the hard work that the staff put in and the hard work of our superintendent and everyone here for getting us to that spot, because it was a wonderful ceremony. And I know there are districts that would die to be able to have the facilities that we have and the enormity of the auditorium that we have to be able to fit everybody in there. We had the overflow crowd, we took the entire overflow crowd, was able to fit into the auditorium in the balcony. It was, it was an amazing event. I really want to thank the faculty and staff who were able to put that together.
I just have one last comment. I don't want to be redundant, but of course, the spring, all the concerts are just a highlight of my year. And graduation, again, the support staff at the high school and Mr. Cusack did an amazing job at the janitorial and, you know, just support staff at the high school did a tremendous job. But before we move on any further, I just wanted to thank you, Christine, for being an amazing president. Thank you. Well, I think that, you know, we get to know each other pretty well up here, and one of your superpowers is really being a quiet leader and really making sure that people's voices are heard. And that is something I will always appreciate about you, so thank you.
I won't stop doing that, so don't worry.
Anyone else? Mr. Polanski, it's all yours.
Right, just put the outro on my mouth.
Just in time.
Okay, a couple of things. Obviously, the same comment, the risk of being redundant, I'd just like to thank, I have a number of administrators here today and staff members, making my final end-of-year process as phenomenal as it could possibly be. I will never forget that high school commencement for as long as I live, and I mean that in the most endearing manner possible. I know there were some concerns when it started to rain and we had to make the call to bring it inside, but there was not a complaint in the House once that ceremony was over. And I will just let the board know that next year's calendar will not have a rain date on it. It will simply have a Friday night, 6:00 PM rain contingency. We'll bring it back in. Very comfortable in that auditorium. We have one of the larger auditoriums in Suffolk County with 1,800 seats, and it just, it could not have been any more beautiful. And those kids earned every bit of it, and the entire audience earned the same. It was just a terrific ceremony. And again, thank you to our principals and all involved in Mrs. Solotto for creating those events and beautiful little children that are now moving up to their next schools just to be a part of those ceremonies. It's, that's why we do this. For many other reasons, but certainly that's a part of it. Just some things, some heads up, as we now enter the 23-24 school year, things are obviously changing, and change is not necessarily a bad thing. Change needs to be adapted to, change needs to be embraced sometimes, but we'll be dealing with different challenges as school districts and as human beings. You know, we've discussed this before. Mr. Austin is no longer with us. Mr. Wakefield has joined us as an interim director of facilities, and I am thrilled with the job he's doing already. If you've driven by the high school, you see huge mounds of dirt right along the driveway as our second turf field is being installed. But that's what you do see, and that's what you do hear about most. But we also have pieces of roof, pieces of boilers, pieces of roof, everything that needs to keep these schools running safely and soundly are already happening as well. I just received my second set of facility reports from Mr. Wakefield that I'll share with the board in tomorrow's update. But again, he's doing a terrific job, and everything is moving along as planned, and we're working through contingencies. When you dig up a huge parcel of land that hasn't been dug up for decades upon decades, you're going to find things you didn't know were there. I'd be a storm drain that we didn't know existed. And we figure out, working with our architects and with our construction management firm, contracted service provider, how to navigate those things. So it's, everything is moving along as planned. Future budget outlook, you know, we start school in September. We're already thinking about how to get things rolling for budget 24-25, and here's an area where change is inevitable. The foundation aid phase in is done, the federal stimulus funding is done. Things may be a little bit leaner as we progress into the next school year and planning for 24-25. And we are in a, I'm going to say, almost an unenviable position of having to navigate this, but also an enviable position in terms of the fiscal health of this school district. So we'll work through any circumstances that we need to, and we'll be ready for whatever we need to deal with. So, and in that respect, Dr. Ruby Harris will be joining us as our new assistant superintendent for finance and management services on Monday. Kathy Akers' last day was on July 5th. A little emotional for me, having worked with her for so long, but again, you don't lose the personal connections. Those stay indefinitely, but change in a professional environment is something that's going to continue to happen, and it will happen again in a couple of minutes this evening. And we will embrace that change. Thank you to, again, we had to deal with, and I may have mentioned of this several times in my commencement address as well, you know, wildfires in Ontario couldn't really scare anyone after three years of a pandemic and, you know, going back to my dealing with the superstorm first few years here and all, anything else that we've dealt with. But thank you to my staff here and those throughout the district for not panicking and making sure that our kids really understood what was happening. And it happened again a couple of weeks later, and now we know how to navigate this. It may not be the last time, it probably won't be the last time, but these are the things that we as school districts have to be flexible with and have to navigate routinely. I don't want to take up too much more time here, I just want to mention one more thing that may impact things in September, and I've been directly involved in this. There has been a stall in negotiations between Section 11 and officials that may impact scheduling, particularly in the fall, if this is not rectified. I can't get into the specifics there, but we'll be prepared to deal with whatever we need to deal with there. And I know I have somebody replacing me on the executive board of Section 11, and that person will be assisting with whatever needs to be assisted with in terms of negotiations and helping the organization and the county move forward in that respect. But more to follow there, for sure.
And Jim, that stall is with regards to the referees?
The officials, yes. Not to get into, it's just, it is what it is, and there's a little bit of a stalemate there, and that has to be navigated more sooner than later. Leave it at that.
Jim, you mentioned fiscal strength and stability, and I got to tell you, throughout the process of trying to find somebody to fill the position, I think that's something that resonated, that you really have set us on a great path with fiscal responsibility, and I think that made it attractive to a lot of candidates. So thank you very much for that.
Pleasure.
All right, we're going to move on to public commentary. Reorg meetings, this is probably one of the ones that is well, best attended of all the ones that I've ever been at, so thank you for coming out. But this is the opportunity where we have the community come up and speak. There is signage form there, so you can sign your name. The public commentary is reserved for three minutes per individual, a total of 30 minutes. The first three minutes per person is allotted to items for discussion. We ask that you only speak about items for discussion unless we have the extra time. Please do not mention anybody's name, either student or staff. And I think I covered everything. All right, so if anybody wants to get up there and speak, all right, we'll move on then. There is going to be a second public commentary. Go to items for discussion in action, and that is the physical education exemption option that is for.
Yeah, this is not really meant to be a presentation at this point, but it is loaded up here as an item for discussion in action primarily because I'd like it to be open and available, the information here, that is, to those who may be eligible for it. So Mr. Hoops and Ms. McCoy and myself and Mr. Cusack have been working for actually months now talking about a potential, a different option for seniors in physical education. First and foremost, we need to make sure that anything we do is aligned with Part 135 regulations, which this is. Some school districts do this, it's probably the minority of school districts, but thorough research done here, and we are looking to pilot a program that allows eligible seniors based on the criteria that's listed in the presentation, in the information document. I think it's also outlined in the application as well. Eligible seniors would be removed at their request from physical education during a time when they're participating in a junior varsity or varsity sport. Again, this is permissible, this would not be permissible for a club per se, because there's no regulation that supports this, but this would be something that we're going to, I think it's going to work. We've done multiple iterations of this, just to make sure we've got every contingency, including the manner in which the schedule taken care of, but we do think this is going to benefit our students. And there's a number of reasons for doing this. It provides kids additional opportunities to take classes outside of physical education that the physical education period would take up. You know, for some transcript reasons, physical education doesn't always work for kids in terms of their brain point average, but whatever the case may be, this may be an attractive option for those who are eligible for it. So we'd like to move forward with this for the 23-24 school year.
And this would be available to seniors only?
Yes.
Is there any plans to move it to other grades?
At this point, there is not. That doesn't mean that there wouldn't be an option to look at this down the road, but I think at this point, we're focused specifically on seniors in terms of manageability and how it works out.
And do you need us to take any action on this today?
You know what, it's not, it's not something that moves through the curriculum pathway. It's just, it's not changing our physical education program, so it doesn't really require board approval, but you know, I've given you information on this in the past, and obviously this wouldn't be something we do without board endorsement here, but it's more making sure that you have the information and that anybody who has an interest in it can also access the same.
Okay.
Jim, I've just got a quick question on that. What about students that are participating in athletics that are outside of school? Not eligible?
Not eligible. That has to be varsity or junior varsity sport here. And that's by regulation.
Very, okay, cool.
Any other questions? Board members?
And again, for those in the audience, those documents are public, you can access them at any time.
It seems like it would give the seniors an opportunity to pick another elective or take a study hall, something productive.
The one concern was the scheduling piece, because, and what do you do if a student falls off a team during a, and this may also actually draw more toward interscholastic athletics, which is not a bad thing. You know, we're looking for inclusivity here, this may actually improve that inclusivity. But we are prepared to deal with those who come off teams during the year or add on to teams during a specific season. That, I think the scheduling piece was the major fear here, and I think we have that covered.
Great. Move on to curriculum and instruction. Is this one that I read, or is this Ms. McCoy's?
This is mine. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approves CSE, CPSC submissions as delineated.
Do we have a motion? Teresa and Michelle, all in favor? Motion passes. Moving off to personnel.
All right, it is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approved personnel items on schedules 3, 5, 6, 8, 13, 15, 16, 19, and 22.
Can we have a motion, please? Motion by Tom, second by Christine, all in favor? Motion passes.
Okay, I have a load of announcements here, and I'm doing this from the screen here because it's not in my book. All right, so the bulk of the attendees tonight are here for a specific reason, and we are thrilled to have them here. Looking at a crowded audience, a lot of these folks that are here this evening are folks who are going to be joining us on staff in the Huntington School District in 23-24. So if you're here, I know one or two had to leave during the meeting. Thank you for sitting through the reorganization meeting, first and foremost. That is not supposed to be punishment, but I certainly understand that it could come across that way. But if you hear your name, just please stand, give a wave, and you're welcome to hang around at the end of the meeting, just introduce yourself to folks up here. Thrilled to welcome, let's start with, and I think this goes by schedule and alphabetically, starting with Alessandra Servanero, who will join us as an ENL teacher. Welcome, Alessandra. Kathleen Cushing will join us as an elementary teacher. I know she's been with us in capacity here previously. Okay, Lauren Delillo will join us in the math department at the secondary level. Joe Farinello will join us in the math department at Finley. Michelle Hirsch will join us in our ENL department across the district. Not new to the district, but will be taking on a probationary position for the first time in the secondary math department, Christine Letanzio. Also in the math department, but specifically with us to teach computer science. We've done some serious expansion there, and it's only going to continue. Gina Maniscalco, welcome, Gina. In the special education department, I think going to Southdown specifically, Adrian McCormick. Joining us in elementary capacity, Kalen Milanis. Very, very happy to welcome to Huntington a new physics teacher, Joseph Monroy. We know physics teachers don't grow on trees. So welcome, Joe, we're happy to have you. At the elementary level, welcome, Megan Powers. Also at the elementary level, welcome, Aliash Ramirez. Joining us as a dean of students at the elementary, at the intermediate level, I should say, At the elementary level, joining us for the first time, Ariane Rodriguez. Ariane was the one who had to leave a little bit early, and I have to do another reorganization meeting apology there. Joining us at the elementary level as well, Jacqueline Rosales. So a lot of these positions, what we did with our additional foundation aid phase in, which does, this is, these are recurring monies, this is not federal stimulus money, is we hired, many of these staff members are new to the district, we're using that money to increase our supports in other areas like computer science, which needed it the most. So joining our RTI staff at the reading level, Bianca Ruiz. Also joining us as a dean at the intermediate, I'm sorry, student support advisor at the intermediate level, Anell Tineo. In the ENL department as well, Ariella Van Kooten. All right, just warning all of you, I can't see past the third row, so I'm, I see somebody, the figure in the back, so I'm just going to wave. Okay.
That goes for a lot of us up here.
All right, also at the elementary level, and this is, I always feel bad for the people with the last name that begins with a Z, but on this schedule, it is actually, there are two people with Z's. Caroline Zaccax, Zaccax? Could you be for the pronunciation? And also joining us in the math department, and a lot of this is math, straight-on math and math RTI, but this is at the secondary level, Sahar Zubair, welcome, Sahar. Okay, bear with me for a second as I flip schedules here. Okay, so we have two who will be with us for at least a short time. Joining us in the special education department at Flower Hill, Julia Barkley, she's been with us before, but we're happy to offer her an extension here. She's done a great job in Huntington, welcome back, Julia. And joining us in leave capacity as a special education chairperson, Shelby Gersten-Haber. Okay, bear with me for one second here. Okay, I think we're good. Again, welcome all. You're going to find this is, it's a fantastic school district, and it is simply a great place to work and to get to know kids and to really make a difference in their lives. So thank you all for joining us.
Thank you, Jim, and thank you all for coming out. It's wonderful that you've joined our district. This is a great place to teach. I think the next segment is yours as well, Jim, right?
Yes, it is. Okay, so I'm asking the board for approval of items, business items in categories H through O on tonight's agenda.
I can have a motion. Teresa and Michelle, second by Michelle, all in favor? Motion passes. All right, we've just.
Some donations?
Yeah, we've got some good news. We are, Huntington Union Free School District is pleased to announce Kristen Bauer as the next superintendent of schools effective September 2nd. Following the retirement of Mr. Polanski at the end of the summer, Mr. Bowen will work closely with Mr. Polanski in the coming months as he transitions to his new role. Mr. Bowen previously served as the assistant superintendent for curriculum instruction in the Valley Stream Central High School District for the past four years. Prior to being appointed assistant superintendent, Mr. Bowen served as director of instructional services in Valley Stream since 2016. During his tenure, Mr. Bowen implemented a one-to-one device initiative and evening twilight program, wellness centers, and automotive nursing and medical assistance programs, to name a few. In addition, Mr. Bowen launched the district's online learning academy and has also overseen departmental chairpersons, coordinated various grant opportunities, and provided professional development for staff. Prior to his work at Valley Stream, Mr. Bowen served as a mathematics chairperson in the Plainview Old Bethpage Central School District and Rocky Point Union Free School District. And before that, he was a lead mathematics teacher, scheduler, and data specialist at the School for International Studies in Brooklyn. He obtained his two masters of science degree in school leadership and adolescent education from Pace University, and his bachelor of science degree in mathematical science from the Johns Hopkins University. He is currently pursuing his doctorate degree in transformational leadership from the Long Island University. He joins us here today with his wife and two kids.
Was that? Did I miss something? I have, I should.
I just wanted to say that we're going to plan, like, some events for the community to be able to welcome Christian with. to be able to welcome Christian with, you know, later, and maybe when school starts, when everyone's around.
Michelle, donations?
That's tough to follow. We have four very generous donations this evening. The first one is from, is $5,000 from Ms. Sheila Doyle, and the donation will credit the Dennis M. Edwards Memorial Scholarship Fund. The second one is from Mrs. or Ms. Susan Hoernrath. The donation is an approximate value of $45 for two books. And HEPI, the Huntington Foundation for Excellence in Education, is donating $4,608 to offset the cost of field trips, so thank you, HEPI. And the last one is from SEPTA, and that donation is $2,986.25 that will support or that has supported five different grants applied for faculty members who are honored. So thank you very much.
So one final announcement this evening, and I should have done mine first, just in terms of, I don't want this to seem anticlimactic because it took a long time for us to get here, but we included on tonight's business agenda a memorandum of agreement with the UPSU clerical unit. We have settled on an agreement that runs from July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2027, and we're thrilled about that, and I'd like to personally thank, I know they could not make it here personally tonight, but thank Ms. Fran Canjemi and Ms. Mardella Edwards. When the three of us kind of jumped in directly at the end of this process, it moved forward very quickly, so I'd like to thank them for their collegiality and for just being great people and allowing us to get this done in the right way, so thank you to all involved.
That brings us to the second public commentary, same rules apply. Being that there nobody is getting up, any comments by board members, closing remarks?
Just one quick one, for those, most of our school year is over, unless you are doing some things in the summer, the Booster Club is still taking registration for interested individuals, have over a dozen camps that are still open, ranging everything from, you know, tennis to lacrosse and so forth. So go to the school Huntington Booster Club website, and you'll be able to sign on there, it's done by the coaches of our community and of our teams, so if you're still looking for something to do this summer, you have that.
And the district is still buzzing, you see a lot of activity around the district between construction and sports. It's fun to walk around and watch what's going on in our district, can't wait till September 1st. Right, with that being said, no other comments?
Just as we're mentioning camps here, and I'm looking at Mr. Stolato, thank you, thanks to General Aldi, we are running a phenomenal summer arts and STEM enrichment program that the kids are absolutely adoring, so thank you for your efforts there.
And you can't forget to mention the program that Diana's running over at Woodhull.
Anything Diana runs is still...
Thank you to the board for your vote of confidence and for the crowd today to putting through, putting up with me today. Would that be a credit? I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Christine and Bill, all in favor? Motion carries.